Good evening. I call to order this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. This evening, we have two members absent. We have four members present, and that does constitute a quorum. At this time, Vice President Stan Stalfer will lead us in a pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have approval of this evening's agenda. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Any discussion of the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of this evening's agenda, please raise your right hand. Okay, we have four affirmative votes with the student member concurring. We'll move to approval of the minutes.
President Williams, I move to approve the minutes of the closed session dated Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Stalfer. Any additions or corrections to the minutes of the closed session dated November 3rd, 2020? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. We have four affirmative votes. Motion carries.
President Williams, I move for the approval of the business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Stalfer. Are there any additions or corrections to the business meeting minutes dated November 3rd, 2020? Hearing none, we'll move for the vote on approval. All those in favor? Mr. Stalfer? Yes, okay, thank you. We have four affirmative votes. Motion carries.
Mrs. Williams, I move for the approval of the joint meeting minutes with the delegation dated Tuesday, November 10th, 2020.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Stalfer. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the meeting with the delegation? It was held on November 10th, 2020. Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, Mr. Ridenhour, you're abstaining, so we have three affirmative votes for that. That's not enough to approve them, so we'll just bring those up again at our next meeting. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Murray. We'll move to public comment. We have no one signed up this evening for public comment. Moving on to old business. We have no old business to conduct this evening, so we'll move right ahead to new business. Our first item for consideration under new business this evening is the consideration of the consent agenda with Mr. Scott Bakdell, Supervisor of Purchasing. Good evening, Mr. Bakdell.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. Tonight, I have six items for review review. These items were reviewed by our purchasing review committee, and they are being recommended for approval. And staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bakdell. Is there a motion?
President Williams, I move to approve the renewals and procurements for professional auditing services. Renewal to Zeloski Axelrod LLC at a cost of $46,400. Virtual dissection table to Anna Temage at a cost of $100,000. Bulk motor oil and fluids renewal to Holtzman Oil Corporation at the unit prices listed. Landscaping materials renewal to the Mulchman LLC at the unit prices listed. Mechanical and refrigeration maintenance for food service department renewal to MTS Equipment Mechanical at $35,928. And Thai Construction Company Incorporated refrigeration at $60,000 for a total cost of $95,928 plus the cost of parts and refrigerant. And the purchase of up to 500 televisions to CDWG at a total cost not to exceed $144,000.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Questions for Mr. Bakdell? Any discussion? Yes?
Do you think, Mr. Bakdell, you can elaborate on the virtual dissection table and what it does for teacher instruction?
Mr. Bakum, I was gonna actually make a comment about the virtual dissection table. This is very similar to the table that they have at the Physician Assistance Program in downtown Hagerstown. Had the opportunity to see that several years ago when they opened that program. As you know, like a thousand people apply to get in that every year, like only 25 is the size of their class. So for us to have this device here in Washington County Public Schools is gonna be huge. I go all the way back to World Book, Mechanica, Encyclopedia, whatever, you know, it's kind of that, there was a page. Kevin, this way predates you. The other board members don't know what I'm talking about. But I think, as I recall, there was one of the letters, I don't know if it was human body or body or what it was. But you would open that up, and there'd be a couple overlays of skeleton system and then the muscle system or vascular system or whatever. It's the equivalent of that on a table, probably, you know, the length of a person, you know, six-foot person appears to be laying there in front of you. It's flat, but then it has a 3D dimension to it. You can take away layers similar to that. The equivalent of a virtual dissection. I mean, it's amazing what they showed us two or three years ago when they opened up the University of Maryland Center with that technology. I assume this is probably an upgrade from that. So this is a significant purchase. It's gonna take us, again, leap us way forward in what we're offering to students at the high school level. And we're fortunate to be able to use our Perkins Grant. That's federal funding for CTE. And we'll make that available not only to the specific class where we'll house the lab, but I hope we have the opportunity to have other people throughout the county have an opportunity to work with that device. It's really, really a step up and, you know, very exciting.
That sounds very, very interesting. So is it just like a big table that like can pop up, or is it an app?
No, it's, it's...
It's almost like a... Yeah, table with... Go ahead. TV on, you know, it's almost like a touchpad device, if you will, but it's, Dr. Michael's right, it's the length of a body. You can actually also stand it up, so the teacher could stand it up to present to the class. Instead of having everybody gather around, you know, they can stand it up, touch. You can remove, like you said, you can remove the skin layer, you can remove the muscle layer, you can get down to the, you know, the skeletal layer. I just, and I just was looking on their website to kind of get a little bit more information, but it is very interesting.
When we, when we get the device, I think it'd be something I'd like to have staff maybe create a two- or three-minute demonstration video of. Maybe we'll post it on Facebook, on our Facebook page. We'll bring it and share it maybe one evening with the board. It, it just shows the cutting edge that our CTE programs are here in Washington County, so it'd be very exciting to share it with the public.
That's wonderful.
That sounds like a great opportunity for students. Next one, final question. Would this be used primarily by tech highs health professions or their biomedical program? Or would it go or rotate around the whole entire county?
Primarily, to my knowledge, as Dr. Willie might have told me, it's gonna be used at tech high. But like I mentioned, I could see other classes, AP Biology classes, other programs like that to visit and get to use the device. I don't think it's something $100,000 device that we want to be transporting and moving around very much, but we certainly can explore that possibility. I know years and years ago, some AP classes, AP Biology classes in particular, used to go, I think, to the cadaver lab in Baltimore sometimes and get that experience, good or bad. But this is kind of the equivalent, only it's electronic. It is, it is really, it's really a unique tool, really is.
Thank you for your questions, Mr. Bakum. Anyone else have a question? All right, then we'll move to the vote. We're voting on Mrs. Murray's motion to approve the consent agenda as presented this evening. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Right, we have four affirmative votes with the student member concurring. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bakdell.
Thank you.
And we'll move then to the superintendent's report. Dr. Michael?
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Williams. A number of things to present this evening. We're gonna start with recognition of our PBIS schools and the awards that they've won for this year. At this time, I'd like to invite Helen Huffre, our supervisor of school counseling, to make that presentation. Ms. Huffre?
Good evening, Ms. Williams, board members, and Dr. Michael. I'm here to present recognition of our PBIS schools. The purpose of Maryland's PBIS recognition program is to acknowledge schools that have implemented school-wide PBS. To receive an award, schools must submit an application and must meet specific criteria established by PBIS Maryland. There are three levels of recognition, bronze, silver, and gold. While the goal at the bronze and silver levels are to demonstrate implementation with fidelity and show positive data trends with students, the gold level recognizes those schools who are implementing with fidelity additional strategies and supports for students with significant positive impact. We were able to go out to the schools and get pictures, so we're gonna share a PowerPoint with you. So the first level of recognition is for schools who are in the beginning phase of implementation and demonstrating some positive data trends for students. The schools recognized at this level are Bester Elementary, Jonathan Hager Elementary, Pleasant Valley Elementary, Ruthann Monroe Primary, Smithburg Middle, Western Heights Middle. The second level of recognition is for schools who are implementing with fidelity and demonstrating some positive data trends for students. The schools recognized at this level are Clear Spring Middle, E. Russell Hicks Middle, Eastern Elementary, Pangborn Elementary, and Salem Avenue Elementary. The third level of recognition is for schools who are implementing with high fidelity and demonstrating significant positive data trends for students. Schools recognized at this level are Boonsborough Middle, Fountaindale Elementary, Hickory Elementary, Lincolnshire Elementary, Northern Middle, Rockland Woods Elementary, and Springfield Middle. Congratulations to all of our schools who are recognized this year for PBIS.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Huffre. Appreciate that, and congratulations to all of our schools for their being honored tonight. We appreciate all the work with our children and help to make them be successful. Thank you, Helen.
Thank you.
Our next presentation, I'm going to ask Mr. Tim Haynes, our HR Recruitment and Retention Coordinator, to come forward. Tomorrow is National Education Support Professionals Day. Our ESP are a key group of players here in helping to educate our children in Washington County Public Schools. We are very, very proud of them. We certainly want to support them, honor them, recognize them for the hard work that they do. So, Mr. Haynes?
Thank you, Dr. Michael, Mrs. Williams, members of the board. Proclamation. Whereas education support professionals are an integral part of the public education process, and whereas WCPS educational support personnel includes transportation, maintenance, and operations, technology, administrative and clerical, paraprofessionals, food service, and other student support personnel, and whereas education support professionals provide a safe, healthy, and productive learning environment for students, and whereas education support professionals work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism, therefore, be it proclaimed that November 18th, 2020, is observed by Washington County Public Schools as National Education Support Professionals Day, presented the 17th day of November, 2020.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Haynes. Again, I think it's important that the board, we appreciate the proclamation and recognizing our educational support personnel for all the value that they add to the educational program of our children. Our next presentation, I'm going to ask Mike Embly and Chad Criswell, I guess we're switching tables here, to give our annual student enrollment free and reduced meal eligibility update. This is official. As of, as of now, I think we've finally settled in on the numbers for September 30th enrollment date. That's what's used often for much of our formulas at the state in funding. Also, our farm rate, free and reduced meal rate is used for funding as well, and Title I identification and some other supports. So, Mr. Criswell, turn it over to you.
President Williams, Superintendent Michael, members of the board, a good evening. I'm here with Michael Embly, our Director of Food and Nutrition Services. We're here tonight to review the 2020-2021 enrollment and the free and reduced meal students. As Dr. Michael had indicated, the numbers are, I think, they're labeled as unofficial, but they're pretty much official. I think they just have to go through a final process with the Maryland State Department of Education. We don't really anticipate any significant changes, if any changes at all. We are certainly at a different landscape than we were this time last year when we reviewed the enrollment. We are facing some challenges we've never seen before and some different conditions. Starting at our K through 5 level, we're down about 583 K to 5 students as compared to where we were last year. A large number of this is our kindergarten class. When we present enrollment projections, we always talk about our rollover, where we have an exiting 5th grade class and an incoming kindergarten class. This year, our exiting 5th grade class was significantly larger than our incoming kindergarten class because we're down in kindergarten enrollment from where we were last year, is about a difference of 260. So that makes up about half of what we're seeing of that 583 deficit from where we were last year. The other grades, where we saw 1st grade moving on to 2nd grade, we saw migration losses at every one of those grades. It was between 30 to 90 students, depending on the grade level. And again, this is, this is not just a Washington County situation. This is what we're seeing across the state of Maryland, across the country, as we go through these uncertain times. Looking at our middle school numbers, we are down a little bit more than what we were anticipating. We were expecting to be flat. We're down by about 139 students there. Again, this was a migration situation where we had one of our larger 8th grade classes move on to the high school region, which we'll talk about here in a second, and we had a smaller incoming 6th grade. But we were expecting to stay closer to flat, so it was, it was still, we're down a little bit more than what we were thinking we would be. Then at the high school level, because of that larger incoming 8th grade or 9th grade class this year, it kind of mitigated some of the migration numbers that we saw for loss due to the pandemic. And then at our special centers, we stayed pretty flat. That actually did not change a lot, and it never really does from year to year for JDC and Marshall Street. So our K to 12 number, we're down by about 700 students as compared to where we were this time last year. Looking at the pre-K, when we took that level in September 30th, we were down about 300 and some students, more than what we were expecting where we were last year. So our net total pre-K to 12 deficit is around 1,021 students from where we were. Excuse me, 1,052 students from where we were. Looking at our total enrollment graph, you can see it kind of has put us back where we were at around 2,009 for the total number of students we're servicing at the moment. And again, it's something that we are going to, we'll address here a little later in this presentation, but we do expect that number to rebound as we move forward and we start getting into a little bit more normalcy. Looking at the individual schools, I'm just gonna touch on a couple. We see Boonsborough is down by about 108 students. We expected that. That was part of our redistricting to the new Sharpsburg Elementary School. That took effect this year. So we sent some of those students over to the newly opening Sharpsburg Elementary. Cascade, this is the fifth year in a row we've seen a decline in their enrollment. They're down by 17 from where they were last year. And then at the bottom of the screen, you'll see that Jonathan Hager is up by seven students, and Lincolnshire is down by about 34. I'm touching on those because before the pandemic hit, our Student Services Department worked with the Hagerstown Housing Authority for the Phase 1 move of McCleary Hill. We went ahead, and in order to minimize disruption to students and staff, we went ahead and moved those students over to Jonathan Hager, even though Phase 1 was not completed. And so those kids are now counted at Jonathan Hager. We also expect to see Jonathan Hager continue to increase a little bit as Hager's Crossing starts building out. If you drive back there, I think you'll see some construction activities really starting to ramp up. Moving on to the balance of the elementary facilities, Morgansville and Old Forge both had large exiting 5th grades and smaller incoming kindergartens. Pleasant Valley is down by about 60 couple students. Again, that's part of the redistricting where you can see Sharpsburg going up. We sent approximately 20 students from there over to Sharpsburg. And then looking at Potomac Heights, that's one of the anomalies in this group of elementary schools where we had a large kindergarten class come in. That particular school, we saw an increase of students coming into every grade, so that was something we're gonna want to look at. I've already checked to see if it was anything at Cortland Apartments, and it wasn't. So, once I get the data from our Student Services Department, I'm gonna look into that a little bit more to figure out why we saw an increase there, where everywhere else we saw a decrease. I'm kind of anxious to review that. So, on the whole, elementaries are down by about 583 students, K to 5 students. At the middle school level, we have Boonsborough and Western Heights both down. They had large exiting 8th grades, small incoming 6th grades. E. Russell Hicks and Northern Height, or Northern Middle, both went up. That was kind of the opposite situation, where we had a smaller exiting 8th grade and a larger incoming 6th grade. In the middle schools, that was our first of our 1,800 student classes that moved on to high school. Next year, we would expect our total middle school enrollment to come down again as the other large class moves on to high school. And we would expect our high school numbers to go up a little bit next year. Looking at the high schools, Barbara Ingram, with the opening of the new Vincent Rothgro academic center, we saw an increase of about 30 students there. We expect that program to continue to increase in enrollment as they fill those programs up and we get additional classes and class sizes moving on. Looking at Hancock, Hancock's kind of an interesting situation. The high school increased by four students, but the middle school decreased by about 16 students. And the resulting enrollment at Hancock is at about 40% of its state-rated capacity, and actually the lowest enrollment we've seen there in the past 30 years. Consequently, when we look at North Hagerstown High and South Hagerstown High, both of those facilities increased their enrollment by about 32 to 37 students this year, and they are both at record-high enrollments that we've seen for the past 30 years at either of those facilities. We're gonna certainly continue to watch some of the developments that are starting to come up, that some that are currently being built out, some that are being proposed in North and South Hagerstown. And we're certainly gonna want to keep a very close eye on that as we move forward to see if there's gonna be any type of an impact. The special center enrollment changes, again, as I mentioned before, there really wasn't much of a change. The one thing is, if you notice on the first sheet, this, because this is a program, we did include the two pre-kindergarten students at Marshall Street on this tab, so it is different than the 73 on the first page, but the totals do add up. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mike.
I have your information for the compensatory education funding. We are 2/10ths of a percent down from last year to a 47.6%. Our direct certifications were up, but however, the free and reduced students that are eligible through applications was down. Due to the pandemic, not having the full student population in the buildings presented an enormous challenge. Also, we were serving meals for free to all students. So, the catch for families to fill out the application normally is you're racking up charges, and you want to get that form in, where you didn't have that this year. We continued our efforts working with each building principal so that they knew when the students that had applications on file from the previous year were gonna expire, and we started working with them in the end of September. And by, honestly, 2/10ths of a percent down due to the circumstances, I think, is a victory. And I think we're gonna see the same type of results throughout the entire state.
So, a couple of considerations we just want to touch on as we go through this presentation. Kindergarten enrollment. I've spoken to planners in other Maryland counties. I've spoken to planners in California, Utah, across the country. Everyone is seeing the kindergarten enrollment down nationwide. Some areas are more than other. We're hit pretty, I'd say, kind of in the median of what I've been hearing. We're down approximately 180 less than what we were expecting, around 11% less than what we were expecting. And if you remember, every year, we come to you with our birth to kindergarten ratio. So typically, the number of kindergartners we would have seen this year would have been born in 2015. They came in at a survival rate of .83, and it's not a Hunger Games-type survival rate. It's the number of kids born versus how many of the actually show up five years later in our kindergarten class. And typically, we would see on average between .91 to 1.01. So if 1,000 kids were born, we'd see 910 to 1,010. But this is, this year is just a little bit different with us being at around .83. And again, that's, that's something we're seeing everywhere. The grade-to-grade survivorship, all of our grades, as they moved from 1st grade to 2nd grade, were negative except for grades 8 and grade 9. And our 9th grade class is always our largest class for any class size that we see in the county. And that's remained the same this year, but it didn't increase as much as we typically would see. And the biggest number that I think we want to speak to is the homeschool students. So for the past 10 years, in September, typically, there's about 1,000 homeschool students in Washington County that we know about and we monitor. This year, when we took our cut in late September, we found there were about 1,700, almost double homeschool students. And again, as I spoke with other planners and other counties, we're all kind of thinking the same thing, that this is, this is certainly not gonna be a permanent scenario. This is temporary. And as we return to more normal conditions, whatever the new normal may be, we expect those students to come back. And I think that's something we don't want to lose sight of, as we go through and look at our projections for next year, and we try to do our planning, that these students are gonna come back, and we're gonna have to be ready to account for them. We're gonna have to do our best to try to figure out where they're gonna be. We've, we've come up with some ideas. We're waiting on a little bit more guidance from the Maryland Department of Planning on how they would like to see the enrollment projections. But we, as planners, have come up with some ideas that we'll bring to you in the coming months to show you how we're trying to account for the students we expect to return as conditions allow. Mike, if you want to touch on the farms?
Yeah, just as I mentioned, that the direct certifications were up, which we expected, the number of folks receiving assistance. The USDA side of our, of our number did allow us to carry over, since we're not operating the National School Lunch Program, did allow us to carry over those applications. So our USDA farm numbers are gonna be higher. The MSD compensatory education number did not allow us that carryover based on the law. And again, that's where you're gonna see the 2/10ths of a percent decline in that number.
Okay, I don't know if the board members have any questions. We'll obviously have continual discussions about enrollment and farm rates in the future, I suspect.
Go ahead.
I just want to ask, what happens when a school, in the case of South Hagerstown and North Hagerstown High, reaches the state capacity? And also, what, what happens when a school, like in Hancock's case, is only at 40% of the state capacity? So, this is what happens in those scenarios.
Well, I'll mention the first one. So generally, if it's a short-term capacity issue, we generally look to something like portables to try to manage the increase in growth. I think at South, Chad, we already have 12 portables, 11 portables. They've been there now for a good while, and we anticipate South is anticipated to grow. And I think probably, as we look at our projections based on some recent communications we've had, if some new developments come to fruition, we're gonna see South even grow more. In the case of Hancock, I mean, when I was at Hancock, we had almost twice as many students as we do today. as we do today. At some point, what is too small? And it's just a challenging question we're going to have to ask ourselves at some point. Same way with Cascade, at what point is Cascade too small? And those become challenging. So, a building that's 40% occupied, you're heating 100% of the building, you're managing and you're cleaning 100% of the building. You're trying to provide programming for what would be 100% of the students that would occupy that building, yet you're at 40% capacity. So those are big challenges we may need to take a look at in the near future. I've talked a little bit with Mr. Chriswell, Mr. Rollins, some other folks. We may be coming to the board with some considerations for, just looking at how we manage some of the schools that are overpopulated, some that are underpopulated.
Thank you. Mr. Idnarr.
Yes, Chad, how many new developments right now do you think will impact South?
Well, in the Educational Facility Master Plan, last year we had indicated, and I'll count them really quick, I'm finding my sheet, I apologize. We had, one, two, three, four. We had about 14 in South District that we knew of last year. Here in the past couple of months, we have received two new developments, both on Sharpsburg Pike. They're in the preliminary stage right now, so we'll actually be taking those to the Facility Committing Meeting at the next meeting. We've also heard about the Gaver Meadows over in Funkstown. We've sent some correspondence to the county.
Behind the park, right?
Pardon?
Is that the one behind the park or near the park?
Yes, sir. That's the one that's there. So, and of course, those are still in the preliminary stages. They're not, they don't have, you know, final plats yet. They haven't gone through the mitigation process or anything of that nature. But it's something we certainly want to keep an eye on and be aware of because it could have dramatic impact to both E. Russell Hicks, South Hagerstown High. I think the two on Sharpsburg Pike would impact Rockland Woods, which Westfields continues to build out. And as I mentioned, Hager's Crossing recently started their remainder of their 170 homes, so that's going to have an impact to the Jonathan Hager attendance zone. And then you get into Claggett's Mill, Carriage Hill, there are several other developments that are starting to move back up. And again, you know, I know you remember years ago, we thought they were all going to hit it once and then they slowed down. So it's one of those moving targets that we're going to do our best to watch and we'll continue to report, but it is ever-changing.
The one small development behind Arby's off the Sharpsburg Pike, right now, the only thing they're building are villas.
Yes.
Is that what the plan is for that subdivision or is?
We have that one accounted. There's actually, there was recently, it's, I'm trying to remember the name of it. It was recently submitted, the little plot of land between those villas and the Walmart. On the Walmart Road is where they're proposing new multifamily homes. Again, that's in preliminary, preliminary stage at the moment. It has not been formally approved, but again, we do monitor that. We have constant correspondence with the county and all municipalities on developments so we can alert the board as we're aware of them.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Stoffer.
I don't know if this question makes sense or not, but when South High, and you may not know offhand right now, but when South High was remodeled years ago, I do know there were classrooms lost in A Building when they remodeled. Were classrooms picked up in the redesign, other places in that building? I mean, we have 11 portables there now, that's.
Yeah, I mean, I think South at one time was 1,700 or 1,800 kids years and years ago. Used to have A through F Building or A through H, I don't remember how many buildings. I was there when we had all the buildings as an AP. And so we lost a lot of, a lot of square footage and it was built, when it was rebuilt, it was built for the number of students that were projected to be there over the next 10 years, the time when it was initially built.
When was it rebuilt? I don't recall.
Mike Shockey was the principal there, so it's probably 20 years ago.
I think it was 2000, 2001, if I remember correctly.
About 20 years ago. They completely, I mean, A Building wasn't gutted as much as like B Building. The only thing left were the girders on the corners of the building and the roof. And that was.
In the top of A Building, there were classrooms lost there, I know, because now the office is there and the athletic director's office. And I think guidance is there now, perhaps.
Much was moved, lost as was moved.
Pardon me?
A lot of the office space then was moved from down below to up.
Yeah, it moved up.
I mean, they lost space, there's no doubt about it. It seemed like counseling was upstairs of A Building when I was there, but it's down in the main corridor now. Unfortunately, what some of the challenges we're having at South, when you add 12 portables, but you don't add core space. The core spaces, the hallways, the cafeteria, the auditorium, the gymnasium are designed for a school of, you know, 1,200 kids. It's not designed, someday if it gets to be 1,500, 1,600 students, it's not designed for that. So we'll struggle with core space issues, see if we continue to add portables. But I've asked staff to take a look at even the potential of a short-term solution of a more portable, more permanent portable, if that makes any sense. When I was at University of Maryland, they had buildings called the temporaries and I think they were there for like 50 or 60 years before they tore them down.
We were too.
Yeah, yeah, that's when they were built.
I had classes in those.
Yep, kind of a weight clapboard building.
Temporary classrooms.
And I think we have to look at something better for security and just the nature of the portable. So we've kind of a little better design we did this year at Western Heights, a more self-contained hallway type thing. We may need to look at eight packs, six packs to add on there with restrooms or something in a more permanent, short-term permanent way. So just a lot of decisions need to be made, but.
I just wondered.
Yep, well absolutely. When you go down through all the different buildings that existed, remember we used to have the alternative school before the fire. All those buildings are all gone. Down where the back of the football field area would be, where some of the shop buildings and things like that, all that's gone. So it definitely went down in its state rated capacity. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Oh, I had one question.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Mr. Embley, the 0.2% variance seems relatively insignificant, but what kind of an impact does that have on funding? How does that translate into dollars that won't be coming to our school system?
I will be quite honest, I don't know the answer to that. Mr. Brandenburg, Mr. Prue, and Mr. Prue may be able to speak to the actual funding, this year being a lot different than normal.
Thank you.
The short answer is it's really hard to tell, Mrs. Williams. What I know of the comp ed funding is that it's a large pot. Generally speaking, the governor has discretion to move money between the multiple pots within the foundation formula and each of the individual subgrants. So within special ed, within comp ed, within EL, he can move money between those buckets as he sees fit. My sense is, and from some anecdotal discussions I've had with Mr. Embley, is that every district across the state has had the same issue we did this year. You know, we're serving free meals across the country, so there's really not many applications coming in. Our direct certification rate is significantly higher because of the number of families that have moved onto the food stamp, onto the temporary assistance programs. So, those numbers increased significantly and we benefited from that by adding some CEP programs. But in a comp ed bucket, it's really hard to tell because your money really is predicated on what's your number relative to what everybody else in the state is doing. But again, my sense is everybody's in the same boat we are because applications are down.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Okay, the next update I wanted to provide under Superintendent's report is actually Erin Anderson, our Communication Officer. I know the board has mentioned a couple of times, some concerns with our website. More and more we're seeing people use, you know, electronic resources like a website, social media, those types of things to look up information, find information. I think from a staff perspective, the largest use of our website is really driven around staff and we really want to make ourselves accessible and more user-friendly to the public so parents can access things. I know the board will frequently get questions out of a lack of knowing who else to ask. You sometimes will get a question on something that should be on the website readily available. Erin has a vision for that and has shared a little bit of that with me in the past. I just wanted her to make mention that we are looking at that today and any comments that she wants to make, any feedback the board wants to have. My hope is we'll be able to launch something, this would be a pretty significant project and probably fairly lengthy one. Ms. Anderson.
All right, good evening, members of the board. Addressing those concerns, I just want to start with a little bit of the history. Our current website was actually designed around 2014, 2015. It is best practice in the website industry to redesign your site every four to five years. So we're due for an update. I see some large changes that can make a big difference in terms of navigability and making the site user-friendly, specifically with the infrastructure, the architecture of the website, if you will. I say that our website is very departmentalized so that you as members of the board and us as employees of Washington County Public Schools know which departments handle what. But for example, Student Services serves a wide range of supports and services and I'd like to kind of categorize those navigations by those services and supports rather than by the department. I also think we've built up the website over the last five years that we have an abundance of information. So we actually have almost 2,800 pages of content on our website. And I think if we go through and do a good house cleaning, a good audit of visits to that site, we may find that people aren't even necessarily looking for that information. And we can kind of narrow it down to make it more navigable and easy to understand the content that's available for folks. In terms of the needs, we have to meet the Website Content Accessibility Guidelines standards. That's a huge, that's a huge feat for many municipalities and school systems. We currently have a Website Accessibility Statement that indicates if content is not accessible, to contact the Public Information Office and we would see that that is handled appropriately. We want people, regardless of whether they have a disability, whether they speak a different language, to be able to access the content that we have available through the public school system. We also want to see how the website can best support our schools in sharing information with their school communities and school families. And we need to look at ways that we can help people navigate to the information that they're seeking with as few clicks as possible. We can cut down what they call a bounce rate where people are looking for their content and they don't find it and they simply exit the website. So we want to address that as well. Just to give you an idea, we ran a report from the first of this year to yesterday and we've had 1.3 million website hits. We can't specifically tell whether that was a WCPS IP address. I think a lot of our employees use our website, but that's still a high number of visitors visiting the website. So with that being said, we are exploring the options for redesigning the website and funding that endeavor and I look forward to hopefully bringing something forward for your consideration in the future. You have any questions?
Mr. Bocun.
Do you have any plans for the app, the WCPS app, to redesign it or improve it?
Yes, I think our web, our mobile app is significantly underutilized and I think it's because it requires a sign-in every time that you use the feature. So for example, a parent who's signed in for a child at Lincolnshire Elementary School needs to re-sign in every time they use the app. And that's something that we want to do away with so that it's easier, a better workflow for people who use the mobile app.
I know on the app it says it's powered by Blackboard. Do you have to go through resigning it through Blackboard or can you do it by yourself, like redesign?
Yeah, it is something that we rely on the contractor, on the vendor for that.
Anyone else?
I just wanted Erin to just kind of whet your appetite of, she has a lot of good ideas. It's certainly a good idea to take a look at her app as well and I'm glad Erin's already thinking about that. Again, we want to be, make sure that we're accessible to all of our citizens in Washington County as well as, you know, a click or two and you should be at the information you're looking for. We may look for the opportunity, depending upon how long we're out on virtual learning, we're going to pick up some savings and substitutes and some various things. We also have some additional costs we need to cover, but if there's an opportunity this year, I'd like to go ahead and launch into a contract to get our website updated. So, we'll be looking at that here in the coming month or so to bring something maybe back to the board. Takes a long while is what I understand from Erin to get this all done, so it's not going to be a quick process.
And to go through 2,800 pages of content.
Right, right. Sometimes you can have too much. Okay, this time I'd like to ask Mr. Ganley, our Safety and Security Risk Manager, to come forward just for a brief report. Even though we're kind of not fully back in school and currently virtual at this point, we have not stopped our efforts with safety and security. Mr. Ganley, his team of himself, but along with lots of people at the school level, our local law enforcement agencies, support from the state, we've continued to make improvements in our safety and security measures. So, see if you'd just provide a brief update, please.
PowerPoint up, please.
I think the PowerPoint will come up if you want to just go ahead and start. We just go ahead and click forward.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to present the safety update for Washington County Public Schools. Each school is required to do an updated emergency plan. We send that plan down to Maryland Department of Education and the Maryland Center for School Safety. Beyond our mandate, we also ask the Maryland Emergency Management Agency to review our plans and give us some reports back. We look at it as the school day does not end at 3:30. We've asked our school administration to come up with safety plans that continue into the evening and cover the evening activities. One example is the North-South football game. It's a big event and this year it was held at South Hagerstown High School. The athletic director at South Hagerstown completed the safety plan and sent it to North Hagerstown for review. The nice thing about having a plan, it tells people where to respond, what time to respond and what's expected. It takes out a lot of assumptions. We have 10 school resource officers in Washington County. We contract six of those officers from the Hagerstown Police Department and they respond to the schools within the city of Hagerstown. And we contract four deputies to handle the schools outside of the city limits. We applied for and received a $315,000 grant this year. We used that grant money to provide school resource officers an adequate coverage to the evening activities. Most of the activities at this time are sporting events. Our administrative training this year was a little bit different. We did it virtually. Some of the things that we go over is our Safety Reference Guide. The Reference Guide has material inside, for example, when are drills due, who should they call if there's an emergency, things that you might not remember, but it's a quick book to go to to get your answers. We also provide a camera guide for, it's especially good for new administrators. It lets them learn how to use the cameras as well as how to record. In addition to the guide, we've also done school visits to help them with hands-on learning. The COBAR guide is to help the administration review the law on school searches and school In addition to our training, our school resource officers also provided a training to administrators on the role of the school resource officer. Every school resource officer in Maryland is required to be trained through the Maryland Center for School Safety. Some of the curriculum includes de-escalation, disability awareness, positive school climate, implicit bias, constructive interaction with students, and racial and ethnic disparities. Our school resource officers play a big role in our training. The picture you see on the slide is last year's tabletop at Antietam Academy. The school resource officer presents an issue and allows our school staff to work through We rely on the Maryland Fire Marshal and the City Fire Marshal to assist us with our emergency and fire drills. With bringing students back at stages, we wanted to make sure we met the mandates of the Fire Marshal's office. They've been a very close contact for us. Our emergency drills are a little bit different in the past few years. Instead of working on speed, it used to be very important to see how fast you could do an emergency drill. Now we're working more on situation awareness and making sure that our students understand what their options are. We provide a video to the middle school and high school so that what we're providing to each school is the same. The elementary school is a softer approach. It has to be age-appropriate. So we have a PowerPoint that walks through a little bit easier scenarios for the younger children. And I should say that the. And I should say that the elementary PowerPoint was developed by some of our teachers. We continue to make school security a priority. We started adding vestibules in 2014, I believe, and we almost have a vestibule in every school Our Facilities Department does other safety enhancements. If you look at the slide on the right, we've placed a portable building inside a courtyard at the elementary school. But it's not just the portable that's important. They added sidewalks, and they increased the number of school access points so the teachers have multiple ways to get back in the main building, and they don't bottleneck at one door. The Facilities Department took the breezeway at Smithburg High School that connects the main building with the gymnasium and enclosed it to make it a safer hallway and not just an open breezeway. During virtual learning, we took the opportunity to upgrade our 15-year-old card swipe system. We, we upgraded the panels and changed the batteries, and were able to add more access levels to the system. During our audit, we go, we went through every card, and we're pulling the cards to make sure the information on the card is accurate, making sure that the access that the staff members have is accurate. And we also came up with a system that we can issue substitute cards to each school so in the morning, the administration can issue a substitute, a card that gives them access to the building, and they collect that card in the evening. So if there's an emergency, the, the substitute has the ability to get to where they need to be. Our school cameras continue to improve. If you look on the, on the slide on the left, that's the bird's eye view at the new South Hagerstown High School visitors entrance. On the right, that's the same camera, but we've divided that view into four shots that can be placed up on the monitor. We're working with the school administration on the titling that they've had, that they have on their camera systems to make everything blend together. So instead of having a camera that says "baseball field," a camera that says "football field," we added, we changed the title to "stadium" so it puts you in the same area. Instead of having an "East Cafeteria, West Cafeteria," we have "Cafeteria East, Cafeteria West." Little, little changes like that make a big difference on when you're trying to locate something on the camera system. The superintendent started a school security task force a few years ago. It brings the leaders from the government in Washington County to WCPS so we can discuss safety situations in the county and how we can make the school system safer. We were able to resume those meetings on October 28th. Washington County is represented throughout the state of Maryland. Chief Kifer is one of the three police officers that's on the Maryland Center for School Safety Advisory Board. Our student representative, Kevin, is on the School Safety Student Focus Group. I represent Washington County with MAB on the Education for Defining Arrest Work Group. At this time, if anyone has any questions on anything with our safety.
Colleagues, questions? Mr. Ganley.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ganley. And our final report from staff under Superintendent's report, our Technology Department, Mr. Robert, Robert Alton, Director of Technology, Chrissy Ramsey, Manager of Data Center Network Architecture and Information Security. I'm going to ask both of them come forward, just to give you a brief update on technology. We do this every year. A lot is happening in technology at this point, especially with our virtual learning efforts. A lot of material supplies we've been able to purchase, but also all the traditional things that need to continue to happen in technology are going on as well. So, Mr. Alton, when you're ready.
Good evening, President Williams, Vice President Stauffer, Dr. Michael, Board Members, and the Student Wrap. The Technology Team would like to thank you for the opportunity to provide you with updates about the Tech Department. As Dr. Michael said, I have Ms. Chrissy Ramsey here with me this evening, who's our Manager of Data Center Network Architecture and Information Security. Our Technology Department has a mission statement to provide reliable, leading-edge, and integrated technology to support and facilitate teaching, learning, and the delivery of services. Here are a few of our goals and objectives that we have set for technology. We want to ensure that our infrastructure, systems, and devices are reliable and secure and up-to-date. We strive to provide an environment that is integrated, secure, and allows collaboration and access to needed information while providing excellent customer service to our teachers and administration. At the beginning of this calendar year, we purchased Chromebooks for South Hagerstown High School, Clear Spring High School, and Hancock Middle High. And those students started the school year with Chromebooks, joining North Hagerstown High School and Barbara England School for the Arts. In the summer, in June, we purchased additional Chromebooks for teachers and students to complete the remaining secondary schools. Those iPads, or not iPad, but Chromebooks started shipping to us in mid-October, and we just received the last shipment of Chromebooks for students last Friday. And we're in the process of configuring those and getting those ready for student delivery. Our teacher Chromebooks, we have given a delivery date of middle of next month, where we hope they show up for us because they are a great asset to us. In addition, we also purchased 6,500 iPads in June, and that allowed us to provide pre-K through two students a device in their hands before school started, in addition to allowing us to replace some outdated iPads that we have in the system. For our application enhancements, we have what we call a WCPS Hub, which is an internal web application that we have taken manual processes and automated them, which has created a lot of efficiencies for us. Some of those examples are the leave-of-absence request, which was all manual before, had to go through five, six people before it got the payroll, additional pay tracking, and a progress monitoring tool for our special ed. We also have a data dashboard from our Analytics Group that allows us to slice and dice student data from the student level, district level, school level, and look at the data in many different ways. And that is accessible by district-level personnel and principals and other admin at the school. We're also mandated to provide reports to MSDE throughout the year, and these are just a couple samples of the reports that we have to provide to them throughout the year.
The infrastructure staff supports several areas, such as all of our data center and communication closets, and are responsible for the everyday accessibility for staff and students among all the buildings. This is just a small list of some of the projects that we have put in over the last year. We've partnered with Mr. Ganley, who spoke earlier regarding the security cameras, and we've worked together to build a more robust environment to support that better. And we are looking, working towards an updated MacBook image that is more streamlined and up-to-date using real-time patches as well as encryption. And you can see that we have quite a few listed there, and that's just a small sample of everything that we've done, but that's, these are our biggest projects, in addition to renewing our wide-area network agreement with Antietam Broadband throughout the district to support all of our schools. Due to COVID and the requirement for staff and students to be able to work remotely and learn remotely, we partnered with several different internet providers to try and ensure that all of our families had accessible internet to them. With Antietam Broadband, this was as of late October, we had over 1,100 families served through their Edgnet program, and that has actually grown to closer to 1,300 currently. We have a few areas, such as the outskirts of Hancock and a few areas in Cascade that are supported by Comcast, and we have several families set up with their Internet Essentials Program. And then we have also provided hotspots to families who don't live in areas that are supported by Antietam or Comcast but can get cell reception to help ensure that they have connections.
Well, Mara, help desk area. You can look at these numbers, and they are relatively consistent over the last three to four years. Roughly 20,000 work tickets that come into us, and that's throughout all the Technology Department and all the different areas. And those tickets range anywhere from a password reset to a projector that needs replaced, all kinds of issues that come up in our Technology Department. At the beginning of this year, as Chrissy said, we started off virtually, and this year we created a parent hotline. And that parent hotline, we were fortunate enough to have a Spanish-speaking tech support person, so we were able to offer Spanish and English languages to support parents. And that was, that was manned live from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM in the evening, and you can see that we've received over like 2,300 calls in a two-month period, which roughly 80 calls to 100 calls per day. And they ranged from, you know, passwords for students or application not working, et cetera. But it was a real success. You know, parents really thanked us for having that hotline available to them. And some of the future projects that we have on the agenda for us, we're looking at putting in a new version of our student system synergy. That's projected to be put in the summer of this year. Also, another version of our Munis software, which is our HR payroll benefit package. We're projected to put in a new version of that in the summer also. Network switch upgrades to complete that. We did a couple schools last year. That'll be another year project for us to complete that. Our UPSs, we just finished all of our school campus UPSs. We still have one major UPS here at CES that we need to replace, and that's scheduled for December 29. We're also going to implement an inventory control system, and we're also going to implement an online registration module, which is part of our student system where parents will be able to go online and register their children online.
Okay, with that, I think the Tech Team would be glad to take any questions, and we'd be glad to have them back another time if you have other questions at some other point.
I don't have a question, but I just want people listening to realize the cost of technology in education today. I don't think a lot of people understand, even people in government don't understand the cost of running a technological network in education today. You didn't have that 20 years ago, 30 years ago?
I think I remember the days, Bob, when we used to call everything the AS400. And when I would talk to Bob as a Principal of Hancock, it was whether I wanted to something checked yes or no would have made a difference how the program ran, but beyond that, that was like the extent of our network at that point. So it has grown tremendously. Technology spans every classroom, every teacher, every employee, and it continues to expand into all types of curriculum devices and things, so. Any other comments?
Mr. Bocun.
Can you elaborate on the Edgnet program that Antietam Broadband provides?
So we created a partnership with Antietam to provide a certain level of bandwidth for families based on the number of active students in their household, and we agreed on a mutual beneficial monthly rate, and those costs are being covered by some grant funds that were released due to COVID. And then for families who have three or more students, they have a higher level of bandwidth just because if you have three or more students all trying to do virtual classroom learning and run multiple applications on their devices, it just uses up more of it. So we wanted to make sure that they had plenty of resources available so that they didn't have to do learning in shifts.
I want to credit staff with coming up with that plan. You know, our providers had a limited plan available to students, particularly that went on free and reduced lunch. But what we discovered was it just wasn't powerful enough to run, stay consistent without dropping, students dropping off, off of their Zoom classes or, or virtual learning classes. And we've worked out a, a special deal with Antietam particularly to make this happen at the various levels that Ms. Ramsey described. Again, we're paying that out of a grant through the end of December, and from there, we're picking that up out of the general fund. So it's a new cost for us, but it's a cost of doing business right now until internet service is available to all of our families at a reasonable charge that they can afford.
I have a follow-up question to that. Will those internet access services still be provided down the road during stage four to those families?
You're asking, will they still be available post-COVID-19?
Just like, not, I'm talking about like whenever we're in stage four, like down the road, will they still be available?
Yes, we, we continue that in stage four.
And at this point, if I could add, the, the agreement with Antietam Broadband at this point with the Edgnet program is through the end of June or the end of this current school year. So the Edgnet program existed prior to COVID-19. We've just expanded upon the program with Antietam Broadband. They've been a tremendous partner to, to work with, and I know Chrissy and her team have worked intimately with, with the Antietam team. Beyond June 30th, if we can come out the backside of COVID, the Edgnet program will still continue to be there. Families at that point will have the opportunity of whether they want to take on the service on their own right and, and, and contract directly with, with Antietam Broadband to continue that service, or whether they want to drop the service at that time if they feel they don't need internet access in their home at that point. And the same goes for the similar program we have with Comcast, which is, I think is called their Internet Essentials Program.
Okay, if there's no further questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that update. Just a couple more things that I have, President Williams and Board Members. I know everyone's anxious about the Return to Learn Plan. Our tentative date right now is December 7th. Obviously, our metrics are continuing not to look very good. We were over 8% positivity, I think, again today. I anticipated we'd go much higher by this point, so I'm at least pleased we've managed to two or three days in a row stay in the eights. I think our number per 100,000 exceeded 40 today, which is significant. So we would be looking for those numbers to come down significantly, get back below 5% positivity before we'd be able to move forward with our December 7th date. Our plan at this time is to make a final decision regarding December 7th. Next Tuesday, November 24th, we make a decision about December 7th. If it turns out that we're not able to move forward on December 7th, we'll provide more information in a smore on Tuesday, November 24th. So we'll keep families posted. Again, they can watch the metrics as we do, and if it's just not appropriate to move forward in a safe manner, we will not be moving forward. So more information to come on that. Report cards are going to be mailed out tomorrow. I can't tell you the exact day that you'll get them. I know some people get them immediately, some people won't get them for several days, but report card grades are available in parent view and student view right now. If parents and students have those accounts, they probably have already seen them a couple days ago. I do want to mention, we will be forming a 100-day Educational Recovery Task Force sometime after January. I'd like to start looking at how do we come out of the, you know, far side of COVID at some point. We're going to have a significant amount of achievement gap to recover, course level work to cover, recover, credits to recover, makeup, just a lot of work will need to be done. I don't have the answers to that. I'm not aware of any one person that has the answers to that nationwide. It's an ongoing discussion among superintendents, but we'll be forming a fairly large committee to start thinking about. We want to continue to work on, and we are working on, after-school work and homework clubs, and all those things are existing and were happening right now, but we need to really start thinking about how do we quickly help our students recover, whether that's sometime in the spring, whether it's next fall, whenever that is. And then how do we budget for that? How do we purchase materials for that? How do we schedule that? Is that something in summer school? Is it something beyond summer school? Is it some type of change to our school day next year for some students? What does that support look like? So more information to come on that after the first of the year. We'll try to determine some co-chairs for that, and it'll be a fairly large committee that'll look a lot of different things. I do have a video I want to share tonight, but before I do that, and while I have the floor, I do want to thank Mr. Ridenair for his 16 years of service to the Board, for his many years of service to Boonsboro High School in particular, not only as a social studies teacher, but basketball coach, baseball coach. He's been a great supporter and, and friend to me through many years and many different positions I've held during the 16 years of his service, and I just want him to know that we appreciate his support, that I personally appreciate his support and his service to the public. So just while I have the floor, I wanted to share that. And the last thing I have is a video, I hope it's going to play here this evening. We had 132 teachers last year that had perfect attendance. I don't know whether the spring may have helped out a little bit. We did have a new incentive last year for teachers, but normally we run somewhere between 35 and 45 teachers with perfect attendance, and last year we had 132. last year, we had 132. So over the last week and a half or so, I've had the opportunity to go and personally meet and hand their certificates to almost every one of the 132 people. Oddly enough, we had a couple of people that had jury duty. We had one young lady whose husband had emergency surgery. She's had perfect attendance for several years in a row. She apologized to be at a later time. I felt awful about that. Somebody was out in quarantine, but for the most part, had the opportunity to meet and see every one of our 132 recipients of perfect attendance last year. We do know that every day matters for our children, having their teacher there, having the child show up is a significant part of our educational program. I also kind of joked with many of these people and said, we understand this year, if you don't have perfect attendance, do not try to break any records, do not try to continue your long string of perfect attendance years. If you're sick, we need to encourage everyone to abide by the COVID-19 expectations. If you're sick, you're not feeling well, you have a temperature, please, we want everyone to stay home, but particularly our long-running perfect attendance people that decide to take a break and pick it back up after COVID. But with that, the video will conclude my comments, and we just want to recognize our 132 recipients. We do have a couple stand-ins, a couple places you're going to see the principals standing in, holding the certificate, so you might have to recognize that's not the individual and look at the name on the certificate.
Your approval, and I'm here to ask for your approval of those changes.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Is there a motion?
I'm going to move to approve the personnel actions.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stelfer. Any questions for Dr. Pugh? Okay, we're voting to approve personnel action as discussed earlier in closed session. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, we have four affirmative votes. Motion carries. Personnel actions are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Okay, we'll have reports to the board with board member committee reports. Are there any reports to be made this evening? Mrs. Murray, did you have anything from curriculum?
I was just going to say that curriculum and instruction will meet Tuesday, November 24th at 4:00 p.m. here at the CES.
Thank you. And any other committees? Mr. Bakum, did you have anything from student government that you wanted to share?
I don't have anything tonight.
Thank you. And Mr. Stelfer, I think you have something that you want to share with us with regard to the MAB legislative committee meeting that was held yesterday.
I'll try to read this without my glasses fogging up. The Maryland Association of Boards of Education Legislative Committee met virtually yesterday morning from 10:00 to 12:00. Fewer counties than usual were on the sessions, on the session. The committee adopted its legislative priorities and positions. They adopted their 2021 General Assembly Session advocacy ideas. They adopted the idea to push for funding for the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, and it was indicated that funding for that, if approved, is spread over the next 10 to 13 years. If that is approved, the Bill to Learn law will go into effect, which gives school construction authority to the Maryland Stadium Authority. They talked about sustaining local funding. It was also said that there apparently been significant improvement in state revenue projections and so forth. They talked about the areas where money is available for school systems, from the CARES Act, from the Essa Support Act, or the Governor's Relief Fund, I think it's called, and the COVID Relief Fund throughout the state. These are some things that will come up probably in the legislative session. The Maryland House of Delegates and the Maryland State Senate have announced their operating procedures for the upcoming session. They will not be meeting in the chambers as usual, but they are going to have legislative sessions and committee sessions. Some of the issues that are coming up in some of the counties and jurisdictions, local educational units, there's concern about SROs and the role they play in the school systems. Apparently, there are difficulties in some of the school districts with the roles of SROs. I did point out that Washington County doesn't have significant problems. There's even a push on in some counties to perhaps even get rid of SROs. But it'll be interesting to see what bills are introduced concerning SROs. There was mention of possibility of bills concerning vaccine mandates because of COVID. There was something brought up, and it really wasn't quite clear because it was talked about very generally, about curriculum issues, especially with the area of social studies concerning, as a result of the equity issue and so forth. So I don't know if that means, and nobody was sure, if that means there'll be a push for new curriculum courses to meet equity issues or not. We're not sure. Bill 486, which talked about the background checks for hiring new teachers and personnel, the author of that bill, it was said now realizes that there were things that needed to be fixed about it, and the author is okay with doing that. MAB and the Maryland State Education Association and other interested parties are all agreed on the fixes apparently for that law, so that should be done. And then there's concern about bills being introduced to expand the scope of bargaining because of the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. And I would guess, just guessing, and Dr. Michael, you can say something about this, I would guess that's because of the teacher career ladder, perhaps?
I would think that would have to be part of it. I don't know. If that all passes, I think it completely turns our salary scale on its head a little bit, so we'll have to see what that means.
And as I've said for many years, I'm glad the Maryland General Assembly only meets for 90 days. Any longer would get into more trouble, so that's all I have, Madam President.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stelfer. So that concludes board member committee reports. Under miscellaneous business this evening, we have Ms. Becky Higgins-Ary, who is a teacher and a member of the WCTA Board of Directors, and Mrs. Carol Mallon, who is a teacher. And Mrs. Mallon is Washington County Teacher Association Vice President. They're here this evening to present some information regarding a survey that was conducted by the Washington County Teachers Association. So good evening to you ladies and welcome. We're ready when you are.
All right. Well, thank you very much for this opportunity to share some of the key questions, findings, and recommendations from the WCTA Fall Survey to our members. As you introduced us, I am Carol Mallon, Vice President of WCTA and the editor of this WCTA report to the board. With me is Becky Higgins-Ary, our survey author.
Good evening. Just a little background, some context for our Fall Survey. We created a rather lengthy survey with a variety of questions that actually were for our purposes, but additionally, we wanted to use it as a means to somehow capture and understand teacher experiences during virtual learning and the return to learn plan. This is definitely a small representative sample. You can see that we were fortunate enough to get a balanced perspective between elementary and secondary, and we do realize that there's more and more we could talk about. So we certainly can discuss anything more as desired, even after this presentation.
Our report has three components: key questions, findings from the data, and WCTA's recommendations based on those findings. The key questions concern time to plan and assess student work, retention and the mental and physical health of teachers, and a consideration of perceptions related to distance learning with the reality that teachers are experiencing. Take a moment to review this first key question about time. Since August, teachers have needed to plan for a variety of situations, including virtual instruction and concurrent instruction, as well as the assessment time needed to inform the planning cycle so that we can meet the needs of students. While even in a regular year, teachers often note that they need more time, in this new environment, even more time is needed. Here are the three survey questions following this slide that provide us data in how much time teachers have to plan during the school day and how much additional time teachers are giving to meet these new demands. As noted in this graph, approximately 65% of teachers who responded indicate that they have the 30 minutes of uninterrupted planning time during the student day, but this time is really not adequate to the planning and assessing needs. Our next slide talks specifically about weekend hours. This graph clearly shows that many teachers are putting in a significant amount of additional time over the weekends to successfully implement the return to learn plan, with nearly 26% reporting spending four to six hours. And in addition, nearly 20% report spending seven or more hours to be prepared for the week. In terms of weekday hours, in addition to these weekend hours, teachers are working regularly beyond their workday, both before and after the time expected throughout the week. For example, 61% reported working at least three hours each week beyond the contracted day, and more specifically, 23.3% are working an additional four to six hours during the week, 16.6% working seven to 10 additional hours each week to meet the need, and 9% are working 11 hours or more each week to meet the goals and expectations before them. And so our findings related to time. No surprises, planning to teach virtually as well as moving between distance learning and concurrent teaching takes more time than the traditional in school environment. And to meet this need, teachers are giving more. And finally, we don't believe that teachers will be able to sustain this level of work in the current design.
Our next key question was trying to take a look at retention and also seeing that alongside health. The question was thinking about how the pandemic could be affecting teachers' plans to remain in the classroom or their health, whether it be physical or mental. One key question that we asked was for individuals to give us some idea about retention. Do the current working conditions give them any particular thinking? As you can see on the slide labeled retention, we are greatly concerned about our workforce, as I know others are. We are concerned about it today. We're concerned about it in the future, when we have over 40% of individuals have given thought to quitting teaching altogether and a large percent considering leaving this school district or just simply retiring early. We also wanted to think about the screen time concept, as we know that that has increased for all parties involved in public education. The data for the screen time is really considering how much screen time is in addition to teaching live, teaching via Zoom or teaching through Google Meet. And we have approximately anywhere around 50% of our teachers saying that they're putting five to nine hours additionally behind the screen. So that really leads us to, those two ideas lead us to thinking about, well, should we ask teachers how they perceive their health during this particular time? So when we look at the next slide and you realize that there's all these particular things, some of them really relate to excessive screen time. It certainly gives us pause to think about how this is impacting the well-being of our workforce. We certainly recognize how everyone's health in this particular profession may be impacted during this particular time and also in this design. But we are curious about what the long, as well as the short-term, impact or implication will be towards our teacher, towards our workforce's health. So we looked at a variety of other data as well. Our findings, we all know that our teachers want to do their absolute best. Our findings, we all know that our teachers want to do their absolute best. We do wonder about the current schedule and the current level of expectations and how that does impact their health and their well-being and their productivity. There is a big question about screen time. We know it's necessary right now in this model, so we do wonder how that might be negatively impacting teachers as well as our students' brains and bodies. And we definitely want to continually look at and monitor and think about where are teachers at in the world of retiring, considering retiring, or planning on leaving teaching. This appears to be potentially a higher-than-normal problem at this time.
Our final question focuses on perceptions related to distance learning and concurrent teaching and the realities of the day-to-day. Our current daily schedules, as Dr. Willow has noted, replicates the traditional school day with bell schedules to indicate class times and students sorted into specific sections of classes created in a master schedule. Most respondents recommend that the design for our classes be changed in order to better address the needs of brains and bodies, both for students and teachers. And for us, the far-right snapshot really indicated the need to look at a new or different design for face-to-face and concurrent and virtual options. In terms of expectations, the Likert Scale provided an opportunity for respondents to provide a range of opinions related to the questions. Central office expectations include many directives to maintain business as usual, such as continuing slows, benchmark testing, and evaluation cycles, without consideration of how students and teachers may or may not be able to meet the expectations in the distance learning environment. Respondents also indicated that at the building level, administrators are providing support to filter and manage those expectations. This slide is about teacher input and voices at the table. And since last spring, WCTA has asked for WCTA leadership to be involved in the decision-making process in order to provide teacher voice and perspective in the development and implementation of the Return to Learn Plan. And while it is true that hundreds of teachers were involved in summer curriculum workshops and summer meetings, many of the tasks that they completed were not directly related to planning the student day or the teacher's schedules or making decisions related to a new model for virtual teachings. And so our findings: teachers want to be involved beyond providing input and feedback. They have ideas about how to implement daily schedules that would be better for brains and bodies. Teachers believe their building-level administrators are doing their very best to support them in their efforts. And teachers want meaningful representation at the decision-making tables at CES and at their schools.
One recommendation that we have is to really show more value in teachers and educators participating in the decision-making process. Feedback is not the same as input. Input is not the same as actually sitting at the table when it's time to make those A second recommendation, we've been saying the word brains and bodies a lot, and I know you've heard that in previous instances. We recommend the collaborative and collective approach to plan around what is best for our students' brains and bodies, as well as educator, administrator, brains and bodies. And we recommend that we work together in that matter. Leading us to a third recommendation, or really maybe even a reminder, is that we absolutely expect WCTA leadership to be included in the decisions regarding distance learning generally at the table. We definitely know that we all certainly can accomplish a whole lot more when we are working together.
Our fourth recommendation involves planning the greater community to revision our schools, from daycare providers and community organizations to parents and employers. We're in this together, and we also do believe that we are better together. Our recommendation five: the pandemic has illuminated the inequities that impact student achievement that have existed for decades. Since the 1990s, educators have discussed the constraints of the industrial model of our educational system that was designed for workers to be prepared for assembly lines and for punching the clock, but the jobs of the 21st century do not need these same skills. And while curricular expectations and instructional methods have changed, the school day model has not. It is time to see with new eyes how public education can be transformed. Instead of getting back to normal, we need to return to learn in a plan that is better, that provides students K-12 with the foundation they need to meet their futures with the social, emotional, and academic skills needed to be successful citizens and critical thinkers.
To wrap up, we recognize that even during this challenge, we really can face and realize that we have an opportunity right now. Now, I'm probably not going to be here in 15 years. Carol, I know, will not be here in 15 years. At the start of this year, myself and some of my colleagues, with various experiences in public education, questioned whether or not we will be here in the next five years. Even this year was very challenging. These are the kinds of thoughts that I know are everywhere in public education across the workforce. Even still, we realize that we have an opportunity right now. Our students are watching, our educators are wondering, stakeholders are questioning. Public education is at a brink of change. With or without me, with or without you, with or without any of us, we're there. The pandemic has forced our hands. We have an opportunity right now to work with all stakeholders to address the educational issues that directly relate to the pandemic, for sure, but we also have an opportunity to now reinvision public education, its design now and for the future, in thinking about what's best for the brains and bodies of its educators, our workforce, and the brains and bodies of its students, our future. We appreciate the opportunity to share a little piece of the results of our survey. Certainly a beginning, and if you have any questions, we'll do our best to answer those at this time.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions? Mr. Stelfer?
I'm not making a judgment by asking this question, but I don't know, we must have 1,500, 1,600 teachers, I guess, in the system. And why do you think, I see it's based on 356 responses, why do you think many teachers didn't respond time or what?
I think it's both the time involved and the length of the survey. It was quite a lengthy survey.
How long was it?
Becky?
Well, we anticipated you asking that question because we certainly recognize looking at the data compared to your survey. Our survey was in six parts. We had over eight commentary lines, and commentary meaning open, open responses. And the idea is we were really trying to give every possible outlet and every possible avenue to address things that people have been bringing to our attention over the last months. We took a risk in having a lengthier survey. We took a risk in having some open optional questions. We also, you know, it's communicating via home email sometimes works and sometimes it doesn't. It certainly would be more convenient to be able to push it out to all employees through an employee email, but we know that that's not really the proper avenue for us. So sometimes that is something that we consider in response to how many people respond. So I will say this, when I look at a representative sample, I'm not really sure that if we would have had 600 more responses, percent-wise or concepts, our answers overall would have been that much different. When we look in our commentary, a lot of repetition, a lot of the same thing over and over. So we do look at this as a small piece representative sample. We do see this as still as a starting point for some really important discussions.
I would just like to add, too, that the survey, Dan, that the CES staff put out, I believe, really reflects some of the same themes that we saw in our survey as well.
Mrs. Murray?
I just wanted to ask, in your, you said when you, they said five to nine hours behind the screen, and I was just wondering, is that like three to four hours of instruction and then maybe additional hours in planning online, C-FIT meetings, team meetings? Is that, would that be the nine hours?
The way the question was worded, and let me just, I'll get back there just in case I need to reference it, it was really trying to capture screen time that would not have been live with students.
Okay.
So if I, if, right, so if I teach, my schedule right now is I teach from 9:00 to 2:10. Now, mind you, there would be my 35-minute planning in there. So we were trying to capture what wasn't live with students. So that could be, that could be in the morning, then. It could be an additional after-school. It could be on the screen even during the afternoon time, the office hours. So, you know, some teachers get regular students every day with office hours, which requires more Zooming and that way. Did that answer your question?
Yes. An additional planning time before and after. Grading time, that's really been an impact for me because I can't take papers home anymore. I have to score everything on a screen as well.
I have just a few questions that I'd like to ask, if I may. It's my understanding that WCTA leadership, as well as WC ESP leadership, has met regularly, I think weekly, in fact, with the superintendent and his staff or with senior staff members. So how is information that is shared and feedback that is sought within those meetings, how is that communicated back to the membership?
Neil sends regular emails through the Action Network line. We also push information out on our Facebook page and through the WCTA website. So we do appreciate the fact that they have regular meetings, but as we noted in the presentation, being able to provide input or being able to provide feedback is not the same as being in the room when the brainstorming and the putting the ideas out and the making the final decisions or even making preliminary decisions are actually made.
Okay, thank you. And then I'm curious to know, with regard to the recommendations, who's making these recommendations? How were these arrived at? That was a very good sentence. That wasn't necessarily grammatically correct, but you understand what I'm asking.
Right.
You know, they don't seem to follow the survey findings, but I'm curious to know that who it is that's making the recommendations.
This is a recommendation from the WCTA Board. Becky and I are here representing the Board of Directors.
So it would be the Board of Directors of WCTA.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other, Mr. Stelfer?
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify. On the reasonable expectations, I don't see a page number. It says, "Are CES expectations reasonable?" Response was 82 responses. 23% said, "Very unreasonable." And then when you go, "Are your building administrators' expectations reasonable?" 82 responses said, "Yes, they're very reasonable." And, "Are your supervisors' expectations reasonable?" It says 43 responses, 12% said, "They're very reasonable." So what I'm not understanding is, if administrators and supervisors are carrying out CES expectations, what are those, what are some examples of what those administrators and supervisors are going to kind of cushion the expectations? Does that make sense, what I'm asking?
I think the teachers understand that the principals and the supervisors are implementing the directives that CES has given to them. The specific unreasonableness, I suppose, are those things that we mentioned in the Becky, if you want to add anything to that?
Well, I can give examples. I mean, I'm a high school English teacher. We often wonder, as a high school English teaching world, we're giving the ERI in the same way that we've always done. We are giving a time limit the same way we've had to do. We give our benchmark assessment, and we have a different piece of technology, which is better, generally with the same expectations, with the time limit to score all of these essays. So that would be a CES expectation. It doesn't really get channeled through an administrator, you know what I'm saying? So they're not really, they can't really cushion that. So those are the kinds of CES expectations that we see. Now, I know it's related to a supervisor, but we see that as connected. The evaluation process, while we know an evaluation process needs to exist, the way it is now is no different than what it was before the pandemic, what it was before virtual learning. So we are very fortunate that, I mean, I can speak from my experiences and from what I've heard, that administrators are really working with respect to recognizing how, what the conditions are within where we're working as they go through and conduct their pre-evaluations and things like that, but we realize that is something that is a directive elsewhere. But it is, and it's a lot on them. We can, I know we can talk about teachers a lot here, but I just have to say, trying to meet those deadlines and that evaluation process, I don't know if you've heard or you've experienced one on your own, it can be a lengthy process with all the pre-conferencing and the paperwork, well, it's not paperwork, things you need to fill out before, during, and after. And it just, sometimes it just seems like the last straw, the last thing, the one more thing, but that would be an example of something that they can manage to cushion, but still the whole expectation is the same. We haven't altered the evaluation expectations or maybe the way we do it in this particular world. So is that, does that help answer your question, Dan?
I would hope MSEA would lobby the state board to help teachers out by getting the state board to ease up on evaluations and stuff, FLR, because that's all coming from the state.
We do. In the past, sometimes the Board of Ed and leadership here has also joined us when we address things at the state level, you know? For us, just to do it, and I, believe me, I believe in the influence of the MSEA as much as I, as well as I do here on us, but MSDE and the state board, et cetera, they need to be addressed about a lot of things, actually, right now. And it would be nice if that was a collaborative effort as well. Did we answer everyone's questions okay?
Yeah, I'd just like to talk a little bit with you about expectations. And without question, these are challenging times for all of us. And I know the professionalism and the dedication of our teachers and of our support personnel. And I know, having been a teacher for 35 years, I know my expectations for myself were high, and I spent a lot of time after school working on things, perfecting things because I took pride in my work and because it was important to me to do the very best job I could do. And I know that that's true of many, if not all, of our teachers. So I'm wondering if some of these expectations that are showing up in this data are not those that are self-imposed. Do you understand what I'm saying? That they're making the choice, individuals are making the choice because of their professionalism and their dedication to work that many hours before and after school on the weekends? How do you, how do you sort that out? How do you?
I don't know that you do, and I would say that certainly there's a level of truth to that, you know, but here we have a curriculum that really hasn't changed. I teach English, I think about social studies, math, all the concepts. Nothing's been pared down, nothing has been... There's, nothing's been pared down, nothing has been funneled or let's focus on these power ideas. So for a teacher to, I don't want to say lower their expectations, I'm not sure what the right word here would be, it's really hard to do that when nothing else has been alleviated. So if you're, if you're looking across at all the expectations, they haven't changed. In the back of my mind, then, oh my goodness, like, can I reduce X, Y, and Z? As far as self-imposed, I will tell you that the thing with virtual learning, and you know, really, we could go back a decade or two or three, when we started moving from just a lesson plan that a teacher created to Microsoft PowerPoints and other digital things, videos, we realized that those materials have to be attractive because now we are providing a visual means of learning or an auditory means of learning. So that has been amplified in the, in this, these last couple of years, we have more technology. But now that we are full virtual or a mix, there are teachers out there that that design, that slide needs to be beautiful. And honestly, you know, in the business world, they hire people to do all that. This person, their job is to look at data, then this person presents the data, this person creates the material, the product, whatever. The teacher is doing it all. And you're right, there is that part where the teacher is going to be, I have to do it all well, all of it well. These materials are being rolled out onto screens where not just students can see them, but all eyes are on us, every single eye. A stakeholder, a mom, a dad, a caregiver, they're seeing Ms. Higgins' PowerPoint slides. I will always say PowerPoint, but it's Google Slide, honestly. And there is this, this idea of, oh my goodness, it better be more perfect than ever. So yeah, I definitely agree with you, there is some level of self-imposed, but I do also see that teachers believe that with all eyes watching you and you're still being observed at the same level, same degree, there are still the same curricular expectations, that there's a have-to. And teachers are grappling with, what can I, can I let go of this, this piece? Can I, can I really downsize? So there is this, we're going to be in that, that thought process perpetually, trying to figure it out. What is best for my kids, but what can I actually accomplish without driving myself under? I hope I'm, I'm on target with your, your question. Do you want to add anything, Carol?
I could just add one thing. It's hard for us as teachers. I know that having just finished and reflected on the first marking period, I know there are some things that I've already decided to do differently, right? I'm not doing as elaborate a daily set of slides for all of my classes. I've gone to a one daily slide and then some ancillary slides as needed. But I'm finding that the students are also feeling a tremendous amount of pressure. I can't tell you the, the students who've held on at the end of a call and cried, you know, like, I'm, I'm not able to keep up with the work. And it's not, and I don't feel like I'm giving them the same level of work as I did in previous years because I'm not able to come around and do the quick homework checks over the shoulder. There are a lot of things that I used to do on paper that were just, or in the classroom really, really quick, that when you try to translate that into the virtual environment, it doesn't work. And every, every new technological trick, every, every padlet, every mentimeter, every other place where you send kids on a website to do something different, depending on their ability and agility on that iPad or whatever device they have, some of them are just not keeping up. I had a senior in tears today, just, this is tremendously difficult. I cannot tell you how difficult it is. It is mentally and physically exhausting. It is just unlike anything I've ever experienced, and I've been in and out of the classroom since nineteen eighty-seven, so that's been a while.
Yeah, and I just want to add, because I can feel some of my colleagues' voices in my head right now, outside of slides, there are teachers, we absolutely need to create demo videos now, something that we didn't do before. Have you created a demo video? Once you do, you'll be like, I didn't say that right, I stuttered.
Do it again.
I mispronounced that word.
Start over.
And before you know it, something that should have been five minutes to make is now, has taken you an hour. So depending on what you teach, whether it be in, in the arts or in the sciences, everything you put out now, you're thinking, a kid might need to be able to do this somewhat independent of, of me because I have my thirty-five minutes or whatever their time is, and a parent may need to help them. So you, you want to try to get that demo video with it. And I can't imagine teaching science right now. So when we talked about, and I wanted to go back to something you mentioned, Ms. Williams, about the recommendations not matching precisely to our data. We had tons and tons of data, as you know, our survey was extremely long. When we, when we think about the recommendations, we were, in many ways, looking at these recommendations as a way to address what we saw to be the findings, the problems, you know, addressing screen time. If we, if we bring people around the table and help problem solve that, we think that's something that could be addressed. We can be creative. The experts are all back in those classrooms, those teachers. We've been working with brains and bodies for twenty-seven, ten, fifty, whatever, years, five, whatever. Even Carol and I and the WCTA Board of Directors' leadership, we don't have all the answers. So when we say coming to the, to the table, certainly we mean our leadership, but we, we know of experts as well as you do. You know some of the teachers. But when we come back to the recommendations, and I heard what you were saying, that's what we see. We see these recommendations as a way to address what we're seeing here. You guys cannot address the problem of retention issues alone. Our messaging, our mentor style to many of our members and our colleagues are essential for that. None of that can be addressed by just you all alone. So I just wanted to bring that back up. But I tell you, the, the way we instruct now, even a handout, let's just go with the handout, the way you worded, now you have to add a little area, write your answer here because you have to be crystal clear to students because you're not always going to be there to answer their questions. And parents, in the evening, while many of them can be helpful, you, you in a way need to help them to understand your brain as a teacher. So that document, that video, that slide, those directions now have to compensate for your absence, if you understand what I'm saying.
I absolutely do, absolutely.
And I think that's where the, the planning time, we talk about more, and I don't know, I just got a blurb earlier today, that Berkeley, Berkeley County has moved to give their teachers more planning time. I haven't read the article yet, so I don't know exactly what it's, but I, I'm ready to read it, but it's just, I know you all know times are different, but we, we really believe there's an opportunity here, and we can't do it without you and you really can't do it without us, to envision something different.
I agree.
Radically different, like amazingly fabulously wonderful. That's-
Thank you both for coming this evening and for sharing the results of your survey.
Thank you for having us.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you. Next, under miscellaneous business, we have future agenda items, and there is a brief listing of future agenda items that was included in your packet. Those are, for the most part, legislative briefing on the Maryland Legislative Session, February, March, April, and May. Any suggestions for agenda items can be given to a member of the Agenda Planning Committee, and I would encourage you to do that. At this time, we'll move to Board Member Comments. Mr. Bakum, would you like to begin?
Yeah. Over this past weekend, I got the opportunity to attend the Maryland Association of Student Council's Fall Leadership Conference. It was an all-day student leadership conference. It was very intriguing. I got to present a workshop during the conference, so took back a lot from that, and it was really beneficial.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes, I'd like to thank Mr. Ridenhour for your years of service to the Board. It has certainly been a pleasure to serve with you. And I'd also like to say how happy I am that my fellow Board Members, Mrs. Williams, Mr. Stauffer, and Mr. Bickford, were re-elected to the Board. And lastly, I'm looking forward to working with our two new Board Members, Dr. April Zentmeyer and Daryl Evans.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Mr. Stauffer?
Yes, I'm reading this for Mr. Gessford. This is for Mr. Ridenhour, if my glasses don't fall up here. He said, "I'm sorry I could not be here with staff to wish you a happy retirement from your," I'm going to take my mask down, "Board of Education work. Washington County students were blessed to have such a passionate teacher and coach in the classroom and on the field or court than you. Your presence in the Washington County Public School System will have an everlasting footprint because of your service and your dedication. I will forever be thankful and appreciative for your knowledge, leadership on numerous topics that only a Board Member with years of service could have. I know you're not retiring from work, but moving from one chapter to another, may your book be loaded with hundreds of unread pages and that your upcoming chapters are as happy and rewarding as the many chapters that have already been read." And that's from Mr. Gessford. And Wayne, I don't know if I'll make it sixteen years on the Board or not. I started a little later than you did, but we thank you for your service and, and so forth. You've, you've helped just about every position, I think, on the Board. I don't know if you were Vice President or not, but I know you were President and Committee Chairman and so forth. So good luck in your future years and may you have good health and, and so forth. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Wayne, so much of your life has been spent in service to Washington County Public Schools as a teacher, as a coach, and as a member of this Board. And in each of these roles, you've served with dedication and you've made an impact on many, many lives. Muhammad Ali is often quoted as having said, "Service to others is the rent you pay for your room here on earth." And Wayne, you've never been behind in your end. Thank you for your service. Thank you for the life lessons that you've taught me. Your knowledge and your insight will be missed at the table in the days ahead. I wish you the very best, Wayne, the very best.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of things. You know, I appreciate everything that everybody said. You know, I don't look at myself as that big a deal, you know? It's been a pleasure to work on this Board for sixteen years. I mean, I could spend hours talking about the things that we, we've accomplished. I mean, we built, I think it was eight or nine new schools in the sixteen years that I've been here. As a matter of fact, we, one year we built three, which is pretty remarkable. I remember some of the fights to get things done. I remember begging a fellow Board Member to get the fourth vote I needed to get the first element of Barbara Ingham finished. And the, and the fact that when I came on the Board, I told Dr. Morgan about this place, this building, and, you know, she was very interested in it, but nobody else in the community thought much about it. You know, we had our office, we didn't need anything else. And I look at this thing, I'm very proud of what we've accomplished by getting this and fighting the good fight to, to get it. I remember Dr. Wilcox, I mean, I introduced him to the owner's representative, and he was, he had talked to him and, and he said, "Wayne, you know, let me run with this. I'll, I'll do my best to get it finished for you." And I said, "Okay, you know, it's all yours," and, and we did get it. It's, it's remarkable, and boy, it had such a big part in this also. So just to give you a little bit of advice, Joe Robeson once told me, when I first started teaching, he says, "Choose your battles. Choose your battles." He said, you know, "Don't be Don Quixote, you're not going to win everything. Choose them wisely, and then if you really believe in it, you know, go after it." So I've, I've tried to follow that mantra for sixteen years, choosing my battles wisely, trying not to get an ulcer if I didn't get something that I really thought was, was great or a good idea. And the other thing I would recommend to all Board Members is learn to count to four. Think about that because that's the magic number in Board Service, on local Board Service. If you can get to four on something that really means something to you, you've done your job. So I wish you all the very best. Thank you so much for your kind words. My family, my sister and my wife and I have now a hundred and thirty years of Board Service. So it's time for a breather and watch a few more Netflix movies. So best of all luck to all of you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
And that service doesn't count your niece, also.
I know, she's got, she's got twenty-two years also. So it's over a hundred and fifty years.
So if there's nothing further, we'll let Mr. Ridenhour have the last word here on his, on the day of his last meeting. So we stand adjourned. Thank you.